Call this special meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors to order. We will start out this morning with the flags lit led by Supervisor Holmes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor. Ann, will you read the statement of the meeting procedures, please?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of September 2nd, 2009. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. The Board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is another, if there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the Board. Keep in mind that the Chairman has a discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cellphones be either turned off or put in silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. I will open up the public comment section of our meeting. Anyone wishing to address any item not on our agenda? Seeing none, I will close public comment. We will take up item number one, but before we start, Tom Miller would like to make a comment on this item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have before you a resolution ratifying, hopefully, my proclamation of local emergency order, and Roy will speak to that in a bit. We also have a proclamation made by your local health officer, Dr. Burton, in regards to a local health emergency which we will also have a resolution in front of your Board to do that. So I just want to make it clear for the record that hopefully your action today would be ratifying my declaration as well as Doc Burton's, so local health determination as well. And again, very thankful for your Board being able to make yourselves available on such short notice for such an important issue that's facing our citizenry.
Thank you. Okay, we will take up item number one, and it's going to be you, Roy, to start off?
Yes, it is. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. For the record, my name is Roy Cunha, Placer County Office of Emergency Services. The item in front of you asks, as Tom indicated, that you adopt a resolution ratifying both proclamations, both public health as well as the local emergency, associated with the forty-nine fire which significantly impacted our community in North Auburn, and also to receive an update from the various staff associated with our actions related to this, and an update from Cal Fire on the fire itself. Your ratification by resolution affirms the proclamation that was made on the thirtieth of August. As a result of that proclamation, as you know, the Governor did declare Placer County a state disaster area. By that declaration, it does open up Placer County as well as potentially some of our residents to assistance longer term. For Placer County, it will assist us, Placer County and our cooperating agencies, it will assist us with some cost recovery through the California Disaster Assistance Act. In addition, we are seeking Small Business Administration assistance that is intended not just to assist the various businesses that lost buildings in this fire, but also assist individual homeowners in the form of certainly potentially low-interest loans, but then also in some cases grants or other types of assistance. And I'll get into that a little bit more in a second. There is no impact to the general fund as a result of this action, and in fact, this actually will help us potentially with some cost recovery related to the overall response to this incident. We're sixty-six hours from the start of this fire right now. There's been a number of actions that have taken place from this past Sunday to today. One, we've, we opened evacuation centers on the thirtieth of August at the Rock Creek Elementary School and the Auburn Elementary School, and as many of you know, because you were personally there assisting at the evacuation centers and assisting with individuals that were affected by this, we were able to help a number of people and to keep them informed during a very chaotic period. Since that time, we also opened an evacuation shelter at the Calvary Chapel. We had eight people take advantage of that service the night of August thirtieth. We subsequently opened a shelter at the Auburn Recreation District Gymnasium at 3770 Richardson. We had one person take advantage of that shelter, and then finally none. And we have subsequently closed all shelters associated with this particular incident. So we do not have any shelters at this point. Everyone has found someplace to stay, and whether that be with family, friends, or otherwise. We've conducted damage assessments associated with this, which includes the building department going out and taking a look at various structures and red tagging and providing information at each one of the sites. It includes environmental health going out and taking a look at the environmental impacts which Dr. Burton is going to get into more significantly. As it relates to the proclamations that is primarily before you right now, while it was fairly easy for my office, looking at the scope and scale of this disaster, to clearly indicate that we were definitely within the conditions of a local proclamation, we really had to get out and do some of that damage assessment to determine that in fact a public health emergency was probably necessary and beneficial in this specific instance. That initial damage assessment is currently complete. We are right now involved in the formal preliminary damage assessment portion, and by formal I mean we're actually walking through the area effective 8:30 this morning with the Small Business Administration and state representatives, so that we can secure a Small Business Administration concurrence on our request for their assistance. I'm actually confident that we will secure that concurrence, and certainly I think we have set ourselves up well to obtain that. In addition, within, in under forty-eight hours, we established a local assistance center, a one-stop shop for the families that are most affected by this fire. That one-stop shop is manned by many of the staff entities throughout Placer County, and many of the state agencies have come to assist us. And I'm going to list a few of them. I won't get to all of them, and I don't mean by not including somebody that they're not important because they absolutely were, but I think it is important for the public record that people are aware. First of all, your Board's office, your aides have been there and have been very, very significant in getting this done. Many of you have been there, as you know, and your assistance has been wonderful. It would be impossible for us to do what we've done without your leadership at the local assistance center. So I want to thank each and every one of you. The assessor's office, the clerk recorder's office, Health and Human Services in a very significant way, the planning department, building department, engineering and survey, administrative services took a building without computers and turned it into just an amazing capability, and added the phone lines and all of those things in very, very short order. Facility Services took a building that was ready to be mothballed and turned it into a place where we can be proud to have our constituents show up at, and put professional signage up and all of those things, and they're continuing to man various places. Our public information office has been there and done great work. Red Cross Salvation Army, our Sheriff's Office has been there and maintained a security presence there. Cal Fire slash Placer County Fire has been there and maintained a presence, and it's been very useful for the community to have an opportunity to thank some of the young men and women who made many, many saves in this fire. Many others from the state agencies to include my counterpart agency at the state, Cal EMA. Additionally, Department of Motor Vehicles, the State Department of Insurance, the Employment Development Department, and again, many, many more, all of which did this in forty-eight hours. The professionals that I work with at the state level have told me, several of them, that there isn't any county that they have ever been to who has made a local assistance center available to their constituents within forty-eight hours, ever. And they do this all over the state. So with that, what I'd like to get into just very quickly is where we're going. As you know, we did conduct a community meeting last night. We are going to maintain the local assistance center open tonight. It'll open at nine o'clock this morning, and it will remain open until nine o'clock this evening. We will also be open on Thursday. Again, we'll open at nine AM, and we will close at nine PM. We do not anticipate a need to be open on Friday as we speak. We saw over twenty homeowners yesterday who did in fact come through, so approximately one-third of the population of individuals who did lose homes. And based on the community meeting last night and the success of getting the information out, I do think that we're going to have increased usage of the local assistance center today, and I wouldn't be surprised if we get close to ninety percent today. So I don't know that there will be a need beyond Thursday. Additionally, we're going to continue the damage assessment. As I mentioned, that's, we're physically walking the ground as we speak. We'll also be collecting some of the cost data from the various supporting agencies so that we can provide that cost data as part of our initial damage assessment. So we'll be working on that. We're also going to work very hard, beginning today, on some of the debris removal options. There are options, and so we'll need to recommend a course of action to the CEO and see how we proceed with debris removal. As you might imagine, this community is, we have saved homes interspersed with homes that have been completely destroyed. And in those saved homes are families, families with children, you know, certainly as I toured, I saw, you know, bikes that an eight-year-old might possibly ride around in and around that community, and right across the street was a very dangerous place for an eight-year-old. And that's the reality. And until we get debris removed from this community, it's going to be very difficult for this community, for their families to come back. And so it's certainly one that we want to get on to immediately. We will likely convene one additional, or make available to the community, one additional community meeting. I suspect the primary discussion items that we'll talk about are the Small Business Administration assistance, and then additionally, the debris removal issue. I mean, those are the two things that I think are most significant for us. We'll offer the meeting opportunity to staff as we did in this past model to include Cal Fire and the Sheriff's Office for follow-up to some of the very difficult questions that ultimately are professionals handled in the community meeting. Just want to run through very quickly a couple of slides of the local assistance center. And Greg, I apologize, I don't have the clicker with me, so thank you, sir. That is the front entrance of the local assistance center. Again, this is a building that we were ready to mothball, but it's, they've done a very good job. Next slide. This is some of the land development staff, and before we got started, there weren't any computers in this building. The phone lines were in the building, but nothing was connected. But every one of these stations has phones, tables, chairs, places for everybody to sit. It's comfortable, there's plenty of room, and it's actually putting a very good presentation for the community and meeting the community's needs immediately. Next slide. Some of the state agencies that are there, again, same issue, another very large area. We've set up computers in there. There's a wireless capability that we brought into, that admin services brought into the building so that folks can come in with laptops and wireless cards, and they're able to access their systems as well. We invited insurance agencies to set up there, and so we, you know, have accommodated them, and that's been something that's very popular as well. Next slide. And lastly, we have an area that we have the Red Cross Salvation Army, as well as information about a number of donations that have been made, where people can come to a table and take a look at, you know, what are the donation opportunities and how would I access those donations? That concludes my formal portion of the presentation. What I'd like to do is hand the mic to Chief Brad Harris. Brad?
Well, good morning. Brad Harris, I'm the fire warden for Placer County and Cal Fire's Nevada Yuba Placer Unit Chief. Sunday, August thirtieth, at about 2:22 in the afternoon, we had a very devastating fire start. The fire quickly gained steam, and I'll have Battalion Chief Jeff Brand come up in a minute and go over the detail of the firefight. The end result is we burned approximately three hundred and fifty acres of wild land. Sixty-three homes were destroyed, three homes were seriously damaged, single-family residences. Three businesses were completely destroyed, with six others receiving serious damage. So it was a very devastating fire. In the end, our multiple homes, multiple hundreds of homes were successfully defended by the fire forces that responded to it. Not only Cal Fire, but we also accessed the mutual aid system and had a number of resources throughout the state of California that responded to the incident. And we'll give you those numbers in just a minute. We fielded several difficult questions last night at the community meeting, but overall, the general feeling when we got done is that the overall impression that the neighborhood was left with is that the firefighters did an adequate job in suppressing this fire. So I'd like to bring up Battalion Chief Jeff Brand to talk, he was the incident commander for the fire, to talk about the firefight itself.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Brand. I am the local Auburn area Battalion Chief, and I was the incident commander out there. We'll go through a slide program that I've developed with some overview of the fire. This weather data was taken from the Auburn Airport a little bit after the fire started. These are some of the conditions that we were faced with. It was ninety degrees out there that day, thirteen percent relative humidity, anything below twenty-five percent we consider critical fire weather. Winds were fourteen miles an hour, gusts at twenty-two. The wind obviously became a significant factor out there that day. We received alarm, some 911 calls of a vegetation fire at Highway forty-nine at Rock Creek at 2:22 in the afternoon. Cal Fire, Placer County Fire sent a first alarm assignment out there, both from the Atwood Station, the Bowman Station, and Higgins Corner was on the alarm. One of the things, some of the dynamics that had happened that morning was normally there's two pieces of apparatus staffed at Atwood Station, and there was a large apartment fire early in the morning in the Grass Valley area. There was a request for the ladder truck to respond up to Grass Valley. Therefore, there was one engine at the Atwood Station, but because of our cooperative agreement with Cal Fire, we, our CAD system quickly started drawing other closer resources to augment the alarm. I arrived at scene at 2:28, so about five minutes into it. I reported one to two acres. It was probably more like five to seven. I immediately started placing orders for more equipment, and I established command. We were in single command as it's Placer County Fire, Cal Fire jurisdiction, the law enforcement cooperation with both the Sheriff's Department and the California Highway Patrol, and then mutual aid resources. We established a law enforcement branch early on to coordinate the evacuation, road closures, things of that nature, and that was monumental and had a key role in the incident. They established a command post next to mine to coordinate their resources. Four minutes into it, structures were already burning. This, we can clearly see from this picture, I took this off the Internet, the winds were pushing the fire dramatically. So I placed an order for more resources to assist the firefight. Here's a little chronological order. IC stands for Incident Commander, myself. These are from our radio transmissions. Again, the fire was reported at 2:22. So at 2:37, I reported it's fifteen to twenty acres, multiple structures, half mile of spotting. Spotting's where those embers are jumping ahead and causing more fires. It's jumping into the open fields, across the roads and whatnot, so, and a rapid rate of spread. At 2:41, the fire was already into the Shale Ridge area. Some of my concerns up there was the obvious, the Colonial Retirement Facility or Healthcare Facility. Because of the rapid development of the fire, I made the decision to shelter the people in place. I was ordering more ambulances, and you'll, we'll all have a resource run down here in a minute, but sent some engines and law enforcement personnel into the area to make sure that they were going to stay there and not get on the road system and whatnot, or try to evacuate in the firefight. So at 3:15, I was getting reports that the fire was already into the Dry Creek Road area, Parkway area, with multiple structures involved. At 4:30, the fire crossed Dry Creek Road and into the Saddleback area. This was obviously concerning to me because it drops down into a little bowl, and then it starts another slope run up into the Christian Valley area. But more importantly, my house was directly in the path of the fire. And you know, that, I mean, it was pretty scary out there, knowing the lay of the land, potentially going to Christian Valley and then maybe into Meadow Vista. With the resources we had, at six o'clock, the forward spread of the fire was stopped. We were able to get fire engines and aircraft and bulldozers and hand crews in place and finally stop the spread of the fire. The, let's take a look here at the footprint. The footprint of the fire, our origin area is down here. It quickly was, had wind alignment and slope alignment and the spotting where it was throwing spots, causing more fires. And it came up here, was into this, there's a large field here, and it just continued to grow. Some of our spot fires, we can see the main fire out here. This is a spot fire that you can see right into what we call a receptive fuel bed, grass. You can see how fast it's spreading. So this is some of the problems that were occurring out there. There's a aerial depiction of what we had. The fire was, as Chief Harris indicated, we did, sixty-three single-family dwellings were destroyed, and three commercial buildings were destroyed with multiple damage, but we did save hundreds of buildings out there throughout the footprint of the fire and out here. We were getting spot fires out in here, here, all throughout here. There's spot fires all over the place that the engine companies and helicopters and aircraft were able to suppress. Within one hour of the incident, this is a quick resource inventory, what I had ordered, fifty-five engine companies, and again, the first hour, ten air tankers. I did pull the trigger on what we call a V-LAT, Very Large Air Tanker, a 747. It was, that took some approval all the way to Sacramento level. Because of the way I was giving the updates and triggering some things, we were able to take this fire and put this as the number-one priority in the state. So it quickly became the number-one, and with all the fires in Southern California, it's kind of a, you know, when you're in charge of these, how you delineate that, and that is processed quickly to get the resources diverted and headed towards the Auburn area. Four helicopters, four hand crews, four bulldozers, five ambulances. The ambulances with, we did have some civilian, one civilian lady was rescued by a sheriff's deputy who we were going to nominate for a Medal of Valor. He was monumental in the rescue operation. The ambulances were therefore both civilian and firefighters. We did transport three firefighters to the hospital with minor injuries, and multiple command officers were ordered to assist the field coordination of the incident. Some of the other things that occurred within the first hour is I requested some, the local notification of the Board and the County CEO, state OES, and tried to get some, the declaration of disaster and some assistance. Things started early on, and I think that was probably huge to get that ball rolling early on. Total of ninety engines were committed at the height of the fire, thirteen hand crews, eighteen bulldozers, fifteen water tenders, seven hundred personnel at the height of the fire, ten air tankers, and six helicopters. That's what it looked like from a distance at the height of the fire, obviously pretty spectacular. Some of the things that we, you know, we can observe from this, the aircraft. The aircraft, a lot of times, once these fires get going, an aircraft are used for small fires, or when we have a larger fire like this, particularly wind-driven, they can't fly down through the fire front. So one of the things we try to do is we have them beat the corners of the fire back to try to keep this massive front from developing, and they were very effective in doing that. Some of the aircraft we did use is our, here's one of our air tankers making a drop right there. Another one, this is quite a ways after the fire was out. This is out in the Saddleback area. This was actually taken from close to my house. We had various different aircraft out there. That's what we call a Type One, three thousand gallons. There's what it looked like along Highway forty-nine. I did request Highway forty-nine close down immediately when I got there and recognize the significance. Our command post was on Highway forty-nine, it's just actually right down here, so we can see the magnitude of the ambulances and different equipment staged. There's our command post. Some county staff was out there. There's, as the fire's dying down, we had more resources coming in. I didn't stop the resources recognizing that we'd be out here for multiple days. Some of the things that are occurring currently out there, we declared the Some of the things that are occurring currently out there, we declared the fire a hundred percent contained as of last night at eighteen, at six o'clock at night, meaning that there's no potential that the fire's gonna jump its lines. But we are not gonna call it controlled for probably through the weekend, meaning we're gonna have resources out there patrolling for hotspots and making sure that those smokes and the community is assisted in any way we can. So, we'll have a fire department presence out there through the weekend at least and probably through the week to assist. Any questions?
If I could, a few other details that we could, could go over before we go to the questions. As far as the, covering the cost of the fire, the fire started in the local responsibility area, meaning Placer County, we had fiscal responsibility for the fire. It quickly threatened and spread into the state responsibility areas. When that occurred, the state assumed full fiscal responsibility for the fire, a little over $2 million to date. We applied for the FMAG assistance, the federal, our Fire Mitigation Assistance Grant. We were, we did receive that. So, the state will be getting back seventy-five percent of the cost that we expended on the fire. So, that, that work was done quickly by our command center in order to, to secure the grant, make sure that we recovered as much of the, the expense of the fire as humanly possible. The fire's still currently under investigation. I've got a team of investigators out there today. They will probably be out there for several more days. We're not in a point right now where we can determine exactly what the cause is. There's a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of forensic work that is yet to be done. So, it's gonna be a while before we can release the, the exact cause of the fire. But they are working to that end and it's just gonna take a little bit to get there. As Jeff said, the fire was declared contained yesterday. There's gonna be a lot of internal burning. A lot of smokes are going to pop up. A lot of hotspots are still out there. So, we're gonna have fire crews there at least through the weekend in some magnitude. Again, we're going to be decreasing our presence as the need dictates. So, but there will be a fire department presence in there for some time to come until we're sure that all the hotspots are out. And we don't have the potential for reignition of any structure or wildland in the, or wildland areas in, within the burn. Probably one of the things that we do need to talk about is the, the great response we got from the law enforcement community in assisting us with evacuations and security of the area. Not only did the Placer County Sheriff respond, but we also had the California Highway Patrol and Auburn City PD. So, everybody chipped in. It was a, a very coordinated, very monumental effort. Unfortunately, homes were destroyed by the fire. But it doesn't need to be lost in the shuffle too, that we were able to successfully defend far more homes, homes than, than were destroyed. So, with that, I would open it up for questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Brandt, I can't think of anybody that should've been at that scene as Incident Commander. With your knowledge of firefighting, plus your knowledge of the area, you did a tremendous job. I showed up on scene a little bit after four o'clock and I would've been there a lot sooner if the Sheriff's Department wasn't doing such a great job with traffic control. I had to park about a half a mile away and walk down and luckily it was all downhill, down to the Incident Command. But I, by the time I got there, you could see that all the jurisdictions were in place. I was impressed by the AMR had, you said five ambulances, but I counted at least ten. I talked to AMR Carl Perdone, the Director of this area, and he just wanted to make sure we had all the resources, resources we needed for that assisted living facility up on Shale Ridge. Again, the Sheriff's Department did a tremendous job in traffic control and keeping people away from the scene. I saw at least ten Nevada County Sheriff's Department people there that came to assist. Chaplains were on scene. There was at least three or four chaplains that I saw. Our county animal rescue team was there in force and that was formed after the Gladling Fire. And they've done a tremendous job being, being available for any animals that needed to be taken care of. El Dorado County Fire was there. Every jurisdiction in Nevada County was there. SAC Metro, SAC City. Buke County showed up and that was just, I think, the first initial. And then later on, we had from far away is South Lake Tahoe. Help me, what's?
Albany.
Yeah, the Bay Area, Albany, yeah, Alameda County. They were all, they were all there. As I was standing there watching all this cooperation between all the agencies, it was fascinating for me as an elected official that makes decisions on these kinds of issues, how it all works. And we should be really proud of the way we attacked this, this emergency. I was standing next to Matt Bettenhausen, who is the Secretary of CAL EMA. That's the Formation of Office of Emergency Services and Medical Services.
Department of Homeland Security.
Yeah, Department of Homeland Security. And he was just amazed at how well we did attack this thing. It was interesting that I, he was, he received a phone call from Governor Schwarzenegger's Cabinet Secretary, whose mother lives in Princeton Estates. And he said, "Tell me where Princeton Estates is." And I said, "It's right over the hill. Don't worry. Tell her it's, everything's fine." So, but he was impressed. Actually, he was flying back from Southern California and he saw the fire from the air and he immediately, as he landed, headed up here. The local, the shelter was set up immediately. You know, there was some little consternation because, you know, trying to line everything up. I have to thank Brian Jaeger for, he was kinda the go-to guy as far as being PIO and answering questions at the shelter. Supervisor Yuler showed up with his broad arms, "How many cases of water did you carry in that facility?" But he was there throughout the night. I really appreciate that. I kept in contact with Supervisor Montgomery and let her know what was going on. Red Cross Salvation Army, they just did a tremendous job. Rod Rodriguez from your office was there in his cargo shorts and his Hawaiian shirt. He was in the grocery store when you called him. He came right over. So, anyhow, I can't say enough about the response, how we knocked this thing down and stopped it from being a major, major tragedy throughout this whole region. And I know Supervisor Montgomery was at the local assistance center yesterday. Manny will be welcoming this and I'll let her go ahead and talk about what she did there and whatever.
No, that's okay.
Go ahead. Okay, Jennifer?
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you, Jim. And I, I really wanna appreciate, extend my appreciation to Jim, who we were in contact during the course of the fire. As many of you know, I live about an hour away from it. And I thought, you know, Jim's the guy to call. He lives right there. And he really kept me updated. More importantly, I just, I really wanna thank Chief Brandt. I think he did such a phenomenal job. I followed the progress of, you know, the, the initial dispatch, all of that online. My husband's a firefighter. He actually contacted me about ten minutes after the first call came in and said, you know, "Honey, you need to get online and check this out 'cause it's in your district." And Jeff, I was just absolutely impressed by just the actions you took, so decisive, so quick. And I think you really saved our bacon here. I, I know we lost homes and that's a real tragedy for the people who lost them, but it could have been so much worse. And I think the actions you took, as well as PCSO and the other public safety folks who were involved in the process, really, really averted what could have been an incredible catastrophe for our area. And I, I wanna extend my thanks to you personally for doing that. As, as Supervisor Holmes said, I did spend yesterday, I was the receptionist at the local assistance center. And I just have to say that I, as a former volunteer firefighter, and again, as the wife of a firefighter, I've been on the other side of this. I've never been at the point where I, I've seen what happens afterwards, where the county and other agencies step in. I am really impressed by Rui Cunha and the Office of Emergency Services and just how quickly you pulled everything together. We did have over twenty families come through there. I would say probably six of them made a point of when they were finished with the process of actually coming back to me at the reception desk and thanking Placer County for putting this together. Couple of folks said, "You know, I was a little skeptical about coming here. I didn't think it would, you know, be that helpful, but people suggested I should come." This was great. I didn't think about the fact that I'd lost my birth certificate. I'd lost my wedding certificate. I could get a demolition permit with no fees. I could talk to the DMV and start the process of, of getting my driver's license or my vehicle registration or whatever. Couple of folks used the Veteran Services. They lost all their military records. So, just phenomenal job pulling that together. And I really wanna recognize the dozens and dozens of people over the course of the day who showed up and said, "Can I volunteer? Can I bring food? Can I bring water? Can I bring clothing? I've got a place for people to stay." The outpouring of support from the community was inspiring. I mean, there, there is no other word for it. It was absolutely inspiring. It gives me great hope for the rebuilding process and moving forward. We had dozens of contractors show up to say, "I'm not here to bug anybody, but just, you know, I'm a licensed contractor. Here's my card. Just put it on the table. So, if people feel like, you know, at some point down the line they wanna contact me, they'll have some information." Just a wonderful process. I was very pleased last night at the community meeting that Rocky Sanchez, I believe his name is, had been through the process. He'd also been burned out in the Oakland Fire. And he, he said our process was just so clear, comprehensible, helpful. It was great to hear that. It truly was. I could go on more, but you know, Jim really expressed our thanks in terms of the immediate specific response. And I really wanna express my thanks to all the county staff particularly, who are sitting at the local assistance center now, yesterday, tomorrow. I'm going back over there today to help people start through the process. One thing I did wanna mention was on Monday, when we were on the tour with Governor Schwarzenegger, I did get the opportunity to bend his ear a little bit and ask him if the state could step in and coordinate efforts with us for cleanup so that we have a kind of a, you know, that mutual aid, as it were, for the cleanup. And I'm, I'm really hoping that that resonated with him and that message got to him. It worked very well in the Tahoe area after the Angora Fire, and I think it would work very effectively here. So, again, just thanks to everyone and keep up the good work. And I hope the community takes the opportunity to come into the local assistance center. And anyone who hasn't been there for a visit should come on down. It's phenomenal. We, we have all at the county and state and volunteers, Red Cross, Salvation Army, others done phenomenal work. And we should be very proud of ourselves.
I have a question regarding the, the residential area that was most heavily affected. The Parkway Drive, I believe is the, the street there. I'm, I'm really curious and please understand, the vast majority of my viewing of what was going on was by virtue of Dan Shively in Live Gop three. And just watching the fire seemingly spread from house to house, but without, without transition, without, it's not like it burned a house and then threw a field and then the house next door caught on fire. We're talking about a relatively urbanized area, landscaped, irrigated, not wood shake roofs, at least not that I could see. None of the, the traditional things that you would think of that would expose an individual residence, number one, or neighborhood, number two, to that kind of cumulative destruction. I mean, it was, it was amazing to see the relatively few number of homes that remained standing after the fire went through that area. And I'm just curious as to the fire's behavior and how, as, as I was, as I was watching homes go up from the view from the air, it didn't look like the, the fires were starting on roofs. It looked like somehow flames just erupted from inside of the structures.
And that's a phenomenon we see quite often when we're dealing with large-scale residential fires like this. Initially, this is a wildland fire. The fuel that was burning was grasses, brushes, trees and things like that. It quickly transitioned into a different fuel type, the homes. The first home ignites. The radiant heat from the home that ignited preheats the house next door. Eventually, it heats it to the ignition point. It start, or fire is entered into, to the residence next door. And it's just a compounding effect. You know, heat travels from three means, convection, radiation and, and conduction. And the heat finds a way to get to the home next door. It may not be a roof fire. It may be that an interior component of the, of the house is heated up through radiant heat to the point that it ignites. And the home is actually ignites from the inside and then burns to the outside. And the more and more homes that become involved, the more that we see this phenomena occur.
So, when we, because in, in our county especially, given the, the incredible amount of, of, I guess what we refer to as the urban interface, where we subdivisions meet up with grasslands and all of those, we talk extensively about defensible space-related issues and all the rest. Something like that, you, you, how do you establish a defensible space?
Well, again, we, we are gonna have Critical Fire Days. It happens in California every year. Some areas experience more Critical Fire Days than others. We live in an area where we see Critical Fire Days during the summertime quite often. Defensible space is intended to give the firefighter the opportunity to step in and attempt to defend the home. And sometimes the conditions overwhelm us. No matter how much defensible space we have around a home, the, the fire that, that's in front of us may overwhelm the defensible space and the capabilities of the fire department to successfully defend that home. You know, what we, we try to educate the public to early on in the year is that the homeowner probably plays the most important role in the defense of their homes. And that's providing us, the fire department, that defensible space so that we can get in there and do as much work as we can to help defend their home when the, the fire comes through. In this case, we saw critical fire weather early in the morning. Winds developed, the fire started and spread quickly. And you know, sometimes mother nature wins when the, the fire occurs.
And then I just wanted to add a little bit Supervisor Holmes' observations and more importantly, accolades. I didn't get up to the emergency shelter until about five hours after the, the fire had started. Matter of fact, my first inkling there was anything wrong is I was traveling eastbound on Douglas Boulevard, stopped at the stoplight at Sierra College Boulevard, when a SAC Metro fire engine rolled Code Three through the intersection. I'm thinking, "What the heck is a SAC Metro fire engine doing responding up here?" And not two minutes after that, I got a phone call from Brian asking me for your cellphone number. Because Brian was standing out on his deck from his home right at the corner of Yogurt and Forty-Nine, looking at a giant plume of smoke and six helicopters flying around dropping water. The, the, the coordination at the emergency shelter was impressive, especially how quickly it must've been established, such that by the time I got there, five hours after the fire started, everything was up and running smoothly as folks came in, not just those affected, but people donating things. There, there was clear communication as to what order folks were to be accepted, introduced into the system that was set up, whether they were dropping off water or, or there for assistance. It was also very impressive how, how the media was controlled. Because the media can be pushy in these kinds of instances and, and you know, they wanna get that certain shot of the affected homeowner and, and the media was, was, was kept at bay through the assistance of the Sheriff's Department, unfortunately, in one instance. I, I'm proud to acknowledge the role that, that Brian played in that. Brian, upon contacting you and figuring out what was going on, immediately went out and spent three hours helping direct traffic on Highway Forty-Nine. And then, once he was done directing traffic for three hours, went to the emergency center. By the time I got there, Red Cross was there, our chaplaincy folks were there. And it was interesting because not, not one person in the organizations who were responsible for making things happen changed course without consulting with Brian to say, "Here's what we're thinking about doing and let's talk about it." And so, I appreciate the role of Brian that you played that day in, in being a resource on behalf of the county. You represented us very well without regard for, for, for political jurisdiction or what have you. And, and I think that, that, that you being there and taking the role that you did and, and assisting with, with directing the media as to where they could be and where they couldn't be, allowed other people to, to do their jobs. And I know that for the volunteer group, for the Red Cross that was there, for the other volunteers through the chaplaincy and folks that just showed up to help, it was reassuring to them to have somebody that they could go to. reassuring to them to have somebody that they could go to, who they felt was comfortable making a decision, providing direction, and moving things forward. And that showed all the way through with the transition over to the church, making all that happen. So, I just wanted to say thank you for your role in all that.
Absolutely.
The one Fox reporter from Fox 40, he got a little too close because he got dumped on.
I think he was in the live broadcast when all of a sudden you could hear some expletives and...
Yeah, there were a couple of camera folks who had to be reminded of where it was appropriate and wasn't appropriate. And Brian wasn't shy about letting them know.
Brian's certainly not shy about anything.
Jim?
I just want to make a comment about this progression of the houses burning. The owner of the tire store came on scene, and I was able to get him into a sheriff's car to get him into his facility to save his computer system. That's what he is mostly worried about. But I stopped by there yesterday, and the building was saved. The only problem it had was water damage because the sprinklers were in the system, and that saved that facility. And that's why sprinklers are so important. And I believe it is county code that any industrial or businesses have to have the sprinkler system. But any homeowners out there that are building or rebuilding should think about putting sprinklers in there, because that'll stop. I don't know if that would have stopped what was going on there, but it certainly would have been a help.
It would have helped. And that's going to be something that is addressed in future codes, too, as far as residential sprinkler requirements. And it's something that we'll be talking about as a group here in the not-too-distant future.
Good, yeah, because that needs to be addressed. And then I just wanted to mention the deputy sheriff that risked his life going into the burning building to pull out the lady. And the picture was in the Journal this morning. His name was Deputy Ken Skogan.
Skogan.
Right. And Rocky, for your information, he was a former beverage truck driver, so...
He was trained well.
That's right.
He was used to carrying heavy things.
And when Governor Schwarzenegger was here yesterday, Sheriff Bonner introduced him to him and said, it looks like you'll pump iron.
I saw that on the news.
Yeah, it was just great that the governor showed up. Thank you, Mr. ...
Yes, I just want to mention, because we've talked about a couple of different sites that were activated that day, the incident command that Chief Brant was there with, I think Sergeant...
Scott.
Scott was also there representing, and that's that core area. We had the evacuation center that I think has been very well described. Animal Control Services had activated, were open late in terms of our animal control facility in DeWitt. And then in OES, you had somewhere between 20 or 30 staff folks, and that's predominantly where Rui and his crew was coordinating events and responses throughout there. So, there are many centers of activity throughout the county, everybody doing their role at that particular location. And I know I saw Jim Holmes at every one of those, I believe, at least the three places I ended up.
You didn't have any sprinklers?
That was the scary part. But I think it shows how well all the county departments were doing their role in the right place at the right time to make all the pieces work. And so, there were many hidden pieces, perhaps, from the general public in terms of what they saw. They did not see the Health and Human Services. They did not see the OES staff in the OES area. But all those pieces were making it work, and that's why everybody was well-served. And we continue to well-serve our residents as we have our assistance center going.
Jim?
I just wanted to acknowledge your Executive Secretary, Beverly Roberts, was there at OES answering phones. And I don't know how long she stayed, but she really came in and did a great job, too. So, she needs to be acknowledged.
And I would just add my thanks to all of you. I was in Squaw Valley, relaxing. I would have responded, but I was kept updated on what was going on. And Jim and Kirk and Jennifer and others were doing what needed to be done. And the last thing you need is somebody else there that, you know, really probably isn't going to add a lot to the situation. But I think it's just an example of how these things happen. You can plan for it, but when it goes down, it just goes down. And this one was handled correctly. The one thing that I was concerned about is later on in the night, Mike Tussell from Channel 3, and he's always in the middle of everything, he was going around with his microphone, and there was gas that was burning. And there was a lot of gas leaking, which could have added maybe to some of that. I was amazed at how hot that was burning still.
Well, and Pacific Gas and Electric was a big player in this incident. They had representatives on site. They've been working diligently, not only to restore electrical power, but to get the gas service back up and running for those homes that were affected by the fire. So, when the structure started burning, you know, that obviously had an effect on the gas and power distribution system within that general area. And they've been very active in trying to get those services restored.
But anyway, from my observation, it was handled, it was handled great. I guess the one downside is the Auburn Journal reported yesterday, they had to find some fault with the notification system. But, you know, in looking back, and I worked in the public safety sector, I would rather overreact in those situations to put people on notice versus somebody coming back later and saying, why weren't we notified? It was corrected, but I mean, you know, to, you know, at the level that they questioned it, it concerned me, because I think the Sheriff's Department did an extraordinary job. And that deputy that went in and went after that woman, that's amazing. You don't train that. You either can do it or you don't do it. And that young man did it. And I think it was just, it was handled, it was handled well. Kirk looked very good Sunday night on Channel 40. They caught him kind of at a bad time. He was kind of, looked like tired and stuff. But anyway, I just want to tell you that I really appreciated all of the effort that went out and that we continue to do. And that's, you know, that's one of the things that I know, you know, it's our, we provide those type of services, but at the level we have been doing it is exceptional. Thank you.
Well, and one of the cleanup things that we're continuing to do, too, obviously, we expended a great deal of retardant on this fire. If you just drive out there, you can see the, our mess that we left around there. We're working now to clean as much of that off the residences as we can. So, not only do we put it on, but we're working to take it off more.
Greg, just really quickly, one more acknowledgement. About 10 o'clock in the evening, a refrigerated box truck showed up from Thunder Valley Casino. And two folks got out and opened the back and started the process of unloading about two pallets worth of water. And we unloaded that into the facility, and then they headed off to go deliver some of the water and some other stuff to some of the firefighters and some of the police officers. And it was about a half hour or so later that we finally got the location of where we were going to be able to shelter folks overnight, the Calvary Church. And we were able to reach these two folks from Thunder Valley on a cellphone. They turned around, brought their truck back. We loaded all that water, plus the water that was already there, plus all the stuff that had been dropped off during the course of the night, all the food that had been dropped off. These two people from Thunder Valley were working with us to load all this stuff back up, put it in the truck, take it to the church. They stayed with us until after midnight, helping us unload down there, all the stuff down there. And at the end of the, not until the end of the evening, that I bothered to introduce myself, thank them, ask them for a card, what have you. Turns out, it is the Vice President of Thunder Valley in charge of food and beverage. I believe his name is Scott Hart. I have his card, and if I didn't get the name right this time, I will definitely in our next board meeting. And his wife were the two who drove the truck up themselves and spent the evening helping us unload it, reload it, unload it again. And that kind of commitment from, you know, folks who aren't directly affected, but who do feel invested in the community. It was wonderful. It was reassuring to see all the people. But I just really wanted to acknowledge their efforts above and beyond what anybody would have expected out of them and the time that they spent and the physical effort that they exerted in the task of moving all that stuff around. It was fantastic.
And I think, you know, the measure of a community sometimes is when you have an incident like this and you see the response that comes, not only from the community, but everybody involved. And I think it's a measure of, again, I'll say it, Placer County, because I'm very proud to live here. One other comment I want to make, because we often get criticized for our animal control. They were on the news, I mean, I watched, I don't know how many reports on the job that they were doing with those animals. And I think they did an outstanding job. And I don't know everybody's name, but they were there, they were responding, they were saving animals, they were treating animals. That was heartening to see that, especially given sometimes the criticism that we receive from that, so...
Yeah. If I can, Supervisor Rockholm, what I'd like to do is transition very quickly to Dr. Burton. As I mentioned, we still have a community that does have some components associated with it that fundamentally are not safe. And because of the work that Dr. Burton's staff and Jill Paul and her staff have been involved in, I think we're at a position here where a public health emergency is absolutely appropriate. And it will help us with some of the cleanup and some of the rules associated with cleanup. And I'm going to allow Dr. Burton to discuss some of that.
Good morning, Chair and Board. Dr. Burton, the Health Director and Director of Health and Human Services. I'd like to, Greg, if you could help me, I apologize, I didn't bring the clicker with me, but if, next slide, please.
It was there.
Great. Just like to do a very brief overview of some of the work that we were involved with in support of OES and fire agencies this weekend. Department started activating staff about 4:15 Sunday afternoon, opened our Emergency Operations Center in the department at 4:30, and by 5:30, it was fully staffed in the Nevada County or Nevada Street Office of our department. And also had individuals from Animal Services, like been recognized, deployed out in the field at the evacuation centers and also in the field in support of the incident itself, as well as having staff assigned to the evacuation centers and helping assist the individuals that were having to leave their homes and deal with what the ramifications were. As in all, just a second, Greg. I'll take it now, I have the clicker. Everything we do in Health and Human Services is really day in and day out, and certainly in emergencies, collaboration with agencies, community-based organizations, faith-based community business, and schools. And that was true on Sunday as well. Specifically, I'd like to recognize the American Red Cross and Salvation Army for their phenomenal work, their immediate availability, and their staffing and participation from the evacuation centers throughout the operations of the shelters. Also, I'd like to specifically thank Calvary Chapel in Auburn on Derry Road for stepping up, volunteering before the need was even recognized, if they could be a shelter for that evening, and then staying with it late through that evening hours to be able to operate the shelter on the very first night. It ended up being utilized by about a dozen individuals from the community. Early on in the evening, there were up to 170 people that were initially reporting to the evacuation centers, trying to consider how their shelter needs were going to be taken care of that night. The majority of those individuals ended up finding other locations with their friends and relatives. Actually, some local businesses and hotels actually volunteered free availability of rooms, and some families took care of that. And the County Health and Human Services located a couple of people with special healthcare needs and settings that best met their needs for the evening as well. Really, at the bottom of the slide, this is a reflection of the leadership of OES, your Board, County Executive Office, in having Health and Human Services have an emergency readiness plan, being ready to implement it, whether it's fire, flood, cold, heat, other public health-specific emergencies that might arise. And so, it was gratifying to see that the plans have been in place, the plans that have been exercised worked as they were implemented early on Sunday evening. Specifically, we have a number of people from our department that are here today. I think Animal Services is still fully busy, taking care of the animals out at the shelter, reunifying the families with the animals that were temporarily housed at the shelter, and taking care of their coordination with some of the veterinarians that stepped forward and helped us deal with the animals that were injured. Human Services has primary responsibility for sheltering. At this point, not only did they staff and provide support to the shelters as they were operated, they've contacted 100% of the individuals that had any contact information that ever presented to either the evacuation centers or to the local assistance center, where we have staff there right now as we talk. Children's System of Care, actually, we have our emergency shelter out in DeWitt. It was within the area that was initially notified for evacuation. These are children that are already suffering from traumatization in their lives, but our staff were very appropriately able to shepherd them into another routine activity from their perspective and took them to the movies for a couple hours. By that time, it was clarified it was able to come back to their shelter. So, the whole event was managed without further burdening those children. Adult System of Care, one of our managers, at the same time we were operating our operation center, had already reached out to a group home in the area that needed to evacuate, and in a very supportive setting, arranged for all of the mental health clients that were staying in that group home to be relocated to another home in the community, personally provided the transportation in support of the need for evacuation. Adult System of Care also arranged for Eagle Recovery Home, that there were up to 18 staff and clients that were involved in that operation, that does phenomenal work in helping people achieve recovery from drug and alcohol addictions. And all of those individuals were relocated as a community to what used to be our Rosewood Facility down at the psychiatric health facility in Kirby Hills that was already, we stood it up, it was sort of like a facility in mothballs. And within the evening, the whole community was able to stay together, support each other through it, and have a stable place for the evening and stayed there, I think, two nights, and we're in the process of assisting them and finding another location in the long run. And again, to go back to some of the real heroes throughout the event, certainly Animal Services, all of the officers, and not only them, the county staff that were involved, but Mike Winters has set up a phenomenal network of volunteers on a proactive basis, has formal MOUs with them in place, so that they stepped right in and actually immediately were assisting in operating the shelter itself, assisting the officers in the field, and helping the families that were dealing with the loss of either the traumatization of their animals. Some animals, unfortunately, were lost in the fire, and there were chaplaincy out at the animal shelter that were also available for those families that evening. We're in the process right now of working, and they're doing a phenomenal job of posting the pictures of animals that we're not sure who they belong to and trying to reunify them with the families that they originally belonged to in the midst of the fire. Environmental Health was only available on Sunday for an initial hazmat evaluation of the situation, but has continued to consult with OES and the community members and businesses. There's been a 100% review of all businesses and residential settings by our environmental health staff that started first thing Monday morning. That's led to a comprehensive needs assessment. That's what led, actually, to yesterday, my recommendation to proclaim a health emergency in order to facilitate cleanup. Environmental Health staff have gone out with individual residents, they've met with individual business owners, they've looked at individual mitigation plans and cleanup plans, and they've worked with state agencies in order to best coordinate cleanup as we go forward. Supervisor Montgomery's word to the governor must have worked very effectively, and that yesterday, Jill Paul achieved great support and commitments by state agencies, Department of Toxic Substances Control, and other agencies that helped us with hazmat cleanup. What we're doing as next steps are ongoing staffing at the local assistance center. Human Services has assisted at least three families with some emergency federal funding for food that they were determined eligible for. One of the most critical issues, not only in the last couple of days, but going on for weeks, I'm sure, is this is most likely the greatest trauma that most of these families have ever experienced in their life. They're in the midst right now of dealing with the immediate crisis, prioritizing what they need to do. But the children and families that were impacted, not only those that lost their homes, but those that just experienced the experience, and even if they have no fire in their neighborhood, but there's a broad area of our population that has gone through a significant trauma. We're grateful that not only our professional counselors within Health and Human Services, but also Sierra Family Services, a local community nonprofit, have stepped forward. And there'll be counseling available for anyone that was impacted by the fire that is trying to deal with the emotional stresses that are involved. Hazmat cleanup, like I mentioned, Jill Paul is our leader in Health and Human Services, has done a phenomenal job. It's crucially important that our community and the contractors that are involved in the cleanup use appropriate personal protective equipment, recognize the aerosolized threat of ash after a fire such as this, and recommendations have already been circulated regarding the appropriate personal protective equipment and respirators that we are recommending as people proceed with the cleanup. Animal sheltering and reunification continues. And again, today, we're bringing forward a recommendation for ratification of the health emergency that I signed yesterday. The purpose of this primarily is to be a tool for mitigation and cleanup of the individual residences and businesses to make available the opportunity for a more coordinated, contracted approach where that might make sense, and also to obtain state funding or federal funding as available to assist in the cleanup. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to have a motion?
Got one question quickly. I had a couple members of your staff come to me yesterday with some concerns about, I believe it's the Sierra Foothills AIDS Center was lost there, building. What is the status of that, do we know?
The actual status of the building, I'd have to defer to someone else. I understand that there was damage definitely there. They're still assessing what the eventual utilization of the facility would be. My understanding is that Sierra Foothills Foundation is considering what other rental opportunities they have for the near future, while they consider their long-term prospects and their... in their original building.
Okay. I'd be really happy to work with your staff in whatever way I can to implement getting them moved, if necessary, and reestablished, because that's a community that we need to continue to be able to serve well.
They're a crucial partner in serving the community. And I know, I was talking with some of their representatives yesterday, I'm looking at what options they might have available. So, I think they're still considering their options.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Tony?
Just to clarify, on Sunday evening, the County Exec signed an emergency decree which needs to be ratified. That's one distinct resolution. Yesterday, our Chief Public Health Officer, Dr. Burton, signed a distinct but necessary proclamation for environmental health purposes, and that needs to be ratified. I would recommend we take two votes, simply because resolutions are kept by number in separate order, and it would be hard otherwise to keep track of them. So, we could call for a motion on item one, dealing with ratifying the proclamation of a local emergency by the Director of Emergency Services.
Okay. I'll move approval. Roll call.
Sorry, give me maybe.
Kim?
Thank you. Holmes?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yeah.
Euler?
Hi.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Rockholm?
Yes.
Second motion, resolution, we are ratifying the proclamation of a local health emergency by the local health officer.
Mother Peral?
Second. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I had lights on. Jim?
Lights are on.
Lights are off. All right, never mind. Thank you. Thank you again for all the work that was done on behalf of the citizens of this, not only this community, but Plaster County as a whole. Thank you again. We will be adjourned.